Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at this time. Could you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a verification of the posting of the agenda, please?
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on August 15th between the hours 1:00 and 5:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, revised?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Six A, consideration and possible action, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on July 17th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 17th, 2024.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our appointments, seven A, consideration and possible action, update on current activities, plans, or action related to Bureau of Land Management, Carson City District.
Good afternoon. I'm Shejra Rickstraw. I'm the current Field Manager for Stillwater Field Office with the Bureau of Land Management. And today I have Mark Mazza.
Thanks. Mark Mazza, Assistant Field Manager, BLM.
All right. All right, just to give you some updates with the National Defense Authorization Act, Bureau of Land Management. I did share last week that Melanie Hornsby is the project manager for this National Defense Authorization Act. And so now she is moving forward with more of implementation on planning for a lot of the different sections within the act itself. And also, on top of that, she's meeting with internal new staff members. We have a land law examiner who started last week. And also, we have a range specialist who started a couple of weeks ago as well. So we have a full team for the National Defense Authorization Act. And then awaiting just the application for the Sand Canyon Road. Also, BLM Nevada Department of Agriculture and the Navy. We meet regularly with the affected grazing permittees. So Navy, BLM, and permittees met on 8/14 to discuss the appraisal process that we were at to listen in and also to add the BLM perspective of what are those next steps with those permittees for Bravo 16. And then we're inviting some of those. We extended two letters out to the grazing permittees for Bravo 16 to come in and scheduling some meetings with them to discuss their AUMs. Then next, BLM and BOR, we met on this past Monday. And we discussed Section 2907 priorities for 1 and 2 and the 2908 Strategic Implementation Strategy Plan. So understanding that BOR have new team members, BLM, Carson City has new team members, and Winnemucca District has a new realty specialist who will be assisting with the Section 2907, 2908. We did meet and we have some, we have a draft action plan of how we were going to meet in the future with Churchill County. And so just going to review that with our district manager, Kim Dow. And then she'll probably reach out to Churchill County to see if there are some potential dates that we can share this, some proposals of how we're going to get to starting that seek to an agreement for Section 2907 as well. And just building out that timeline a little bit more with Churchill County is the goal. All right. All right, so with the wild horse in Burrow, we are in the midst of the Marietta Wild Bear Range Gather as of Monday. And so, so far, we've gathered 25 horses and then there'll work on the burrows next. It should be about seven, 10 days is the estimated timeline there. So the goal is to remove 387 burrows and 31 wild horses. The AML is 78 to 104 burrows and estimated to at 387. So the animals first go to Palomino Wild Horse Carrot north of Reno, but then will be available for adoption as well.
I didn't know we had burrows out there. We have burrows out there?
Yes.
So, and you said that 31 wild horses?
Yes.
Is there a possibility that you could get more?
So those are the target numbers there to gather. And of course, the gathering direction comes from our Washington DC headquarters. That's something that we can ask this afternoon when we meet on our weekly calls. I mean, not weekly, but nightly calls during the burrow with the staff who's doing the gathering.
But that Marietta, that's down by Hawthorne, right? Yeah, so that's not by us.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Then, so we're prioritizing the La Hataan Gather EA, so planning stage right now to prepare for the NDAA B-16 withdrawal. So we want to be proactive, of course, and be prepared. So when headquarters tell us to go, then we have our planning documentations ready to go. Also, North Complex Horse Gather NEPA, North Complex would include the Flanagan, Dogskin Mountain, the Granite Peak herd management areas. So scoping letters are being mailed out soon.
Would you cancel the roundup? If you had demonstrations?
For the Marietta?
Yes.
I'm not certain.
We don't want you to.
Okay. Okay.
At least I don't want you to.
Okay.
I can't speak for these guys.
Most of the time they don't.
Okay.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Going back to the B-16 Gather. What is the HMA number of horses that are supposed to be there?
For the B-16?
For the B-16. So in other words, approximately how much is that Gather going to be? Have you guys done preliminary count? I assume you have on what's out there?
What's out there already for B-16 area?
Yeah, so what's the horse numbers that currently are there? What is the number supposed to be?
Yeah.
Assuming that's the difference is what you will gather. Do we have any of that?
Want to answer that?
Yeah, we do. We can bring those numbers or follow up with it on our last census flights that we did over there. That herd, appropriate management level, the AML is really low. It was planned to be canceled in our first resource management plan effort in 2016, which didn't get signed. And I think it's around six. I'm just guessing there. Don't hold me to that. But there's hundreds of horses out there. And we'll fly it again prior to the EA and get a better number for what a potential Gather would remove.
Because of the, and you may not be able to answer this, so maybe I'm conveying a wish, if you want to hear it. Because of the military use and the reduction of open public ground there, is this an opportunity to potentially close that HMA out?
That's something that's going to get analyzed in the EA and available for public, you know, everything and wishes of the Commissioner Board here. But yeah, that would be an alternative.
If you need the Commissioner to weigh in on that, we would love to give them the opportunity. It would definitely be beneficial to the resource out there, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you for that question. All right. So for geothermal projects, Dixie Meadows, we're coordinating, continuing to coordinate with US Fish and Wildlife Service and also the Navy and ORMAT. One additional data needs here. There is an upcoming meeting that we'll have soon, later this month, I should say. It's only a week left, so next week that we're going to continue talking about the plan and next steps for Dixie Meadows. And then for Diamond Flat, the exploration for NEPA is in progress. And just trying to get the timeline verified with our district manager so that the project could continue moving forward there. Another geothermal project that's on hold right now until we get through Dixie Meadows and Diamond Flat is Comstock. So we haven't started that project or the milestones there yet. And this map basically shows you where the geothermal projects are at within Carson City District.
And Coyote Canyon was canceled, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
What's the timeline on Dixie Meadows and Diamond Flats?
So, not to confirm anything right now, we're still working through a timeline on Dixie Meadows. The Diamond Flat one is currently being reviewed by our district manager to proceed on with that. So the next meeting, hopefully, we can have that timeline available for you all to know that date of when the project will proceed on with the planning and the milestones for that one, too. All right. So I know last meeting, I shared a little bit about the Greater Sage Grouse. But here's some more information, of course, this is the BLM 2024 Sage Grouse EIS. Of course, that 90-day public comment period ended in June. However, the comments are continuing to be reviewed. But these efforts are really to build on the 2015 and 2019 Greater Sage Grouse planning efforts and is focused on changing those actions and decisions in which additional scientific information has emerged or which will enhance conservation while allowing for continued multiple use to BLM managed lands. And I think it is important to understand this bullet point here because there are a lot of projects, of course, that we're managing now within Carson City District that has a lot of impact on the Sage Grouse, the Greater Sage Grouse itself. I know Mark and I, we attended a planning meeting for the Greater Sage Grouse a couple of weeks ago. And just understanding how we need to start considering more of the of the Sage Grouse in our planning and also in projects is critical to us as well. So on the map, it just shows the green area where, you know, the Greater Sage Grouse is located. Also, would make the Sage Grouse planning efforts more consistent across the state? So as you can see, across this multiple states, California, Colorado, Idaho, Montana, Nevada, of course, all the way over to Wyoming. All right. And then some grazing updates. Endow has awarded a contract to construct a La Hataan Cutthroat Trout Grazing Fence in the Desotores. So this will be used as a short-duration gathering pasture. So this was a requirement with US Fish and Wildlife Service and the consultation for threatened and endangered species. And that's what we have here on the map there, just sharing the route there. And working with permittee on a prescribed grazing project around the East Gate Ranch to reduce cheat grass and field loads. Cheat grass field, full loads. All right. Any questions on this one? All right. And then finally, just some more updates about Green Lake West and Green Lake North. So final EIS expected to publish. The biological opinion expected to be finalized, of course, in June it was. And so Sage Grouse is one of those biological opinions that is, the Greater Sage Grouse, I should say, that is included here. Record decision expected to be signed and published early August 2024. And then, of course, the Native American Graz Protection and NACPA Plan of Action has been prepared for this project. And the tribes have to the end of August to contribute their. And Walker River Paiute Tribe has been consulted on this plan, too. As for Green Lake North, the draft EIS expected is in August 2024, so this month. And then the final EIS expected in March 2025, with the record decision expected in July 2025. And draft cultural report is in progress. So I'm sure there would be an opportunity to gather feedback and comments, of course, with that timeline coming up soon. Any additional questions to share?
Any questions or comments from border staff? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Move on to seven B, consideration and possible action, ratification of agreement between Nevada Department of Health and Human Services and Churchill County Social Services as a designated family resource center to increase positive parenting through education and skills building and provide outreach to families in need of community resource to support and increase independent living in the amount of $26,442. Shannon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. For the record, Shannon Erts, Churchill County Social Services. As you know, we are the Family Resource Center, which is designated by the state of Nevada. So we receive a funding allocation each year to provide supports in the community. Our goals are really to put on Pin Wheels for Prevention, Community Day, and Family Planning parenting classes over at juvenile probation. And so that's where these funds will be placed again this year. So we're just asking for a ratification today for the $26,442. This was an increase of about $1,500 from last year. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, motion, please. Any public comment? Okay, motion, please.
I move to approve and ratify the award as presented. I move to approve and ratify the award as presented.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Seven C, consideration and possible action, ratification of an assessment payment to the Central Nevada Health District for fiscal year 2025 services pursuant to Bill 2022-D, ordinance 122, in the amount of $244,742.66. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Erts, Churchill County Social Services. At the time of the creation of the Central Nevada Health District, there were certain things put into ordinance. And one of those was the fees that the membering organizations would pay. At the time that we launched in 2023, now my years are all screwed up, 2023, it was stated that we would have an interlocal agreement to come forward with these costs. Based on how the ordinance is written, it's not required. But I thought it was best to bring this before you to know the amount that we were charged for this fiscal year. We have provided payment to them. This is a split between Social Services Indigent Budget and General Fund. So I wanted to just bring this forward since there was no agreement and was not included in our budget this year. So the total is the $244,000. This is a reduction from last year of $9,975. The reason for that is there's a per capita rate, which is $5 for the per capita. So we had a slight population reduction this year and also for that contingency fee that we put in place to be built up to $200,000. So if there's any questions, I can answer.
Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve and ratify the assessment payment as presented.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Seven D, consideration and possible action, termination of Home Means Nevada Initiative deed restriction for 165 North Ada Street, Fallon, Nevada. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Erts, Churchill County Social Services. We did previously in August 2023 approved the deed restriction for 165 North Ada Street. This is for the Home Means Nevada Initiative for the new transitional house and homeless day center. That project actually changed and we ended up purchasing Quail Way. So I've been working with them so that we could get the deed restriction released from Ada Street. And that's what this is today.
Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Noting none, can I get a motion?
I move to accept the termination agreement as presented and authorize the chair to sign.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Seven E, consideration and possible action, ratification of displacement agreements for 280, 290, and 292, Quail Way, Fallon, Nevada. Shannon?
Again, for the record, Shannon Erts, Churchill County Social Services. So as part of the Home Means Nevada Initiative, there are many guidelines we must follow. When we purchased the Quail property, we did have four tenants, which was presented to you at the time that we'd purchased. We are required to follow the HUD guidelines for displacement. Even though we're helping them actually locate a new place, it's still called a displacement. So we entered into those negotiations. They have three different options. Anywhere from us providing them a one-time payment or us paying utility deposits and things when they move. We have completed three of those negotiations and made the payments. The fourth one defaulted on paying rent and ended up being evicted. So today, we're just asking for the ratification for these agreements that are completed as we proceed with this project.
Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Noting none, a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve and ratify the displacement agreements as presented.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon. Seven F, consideration and possible action, approval of an amendment to the bylaws of the Churchill County Planning Commission. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe Sanford, for the record. The current bylaws of the Planning Commission are fairly restrictive as to the date and time of when the Planning Commission must meet. Specifically, they were required to be on the second Wednesday at 7:00. They weren't allowed to change it. They also had restrictions about how special meetings were held. Those restrictions were not required by NRS or Churchill County Code, and they were conflicting with the ability of the commission to meet the public's needs. And so the Planning Commission has requested to adopt an amendment to those bylaws, which just allows for the Planning Commission to set it at a time that's convenient to the commission and to the public. Their current recommendation is to have it on the same day, but at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM.
Is there any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Noting none, can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the amendment to the bylaws of the Churchill County Planning Commission.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Consideration and possible action, adoption of Resolution 16-2024 establishing Churchill County's position regarding the relocation of Sand Canyon Road and Pole Line Road as a part of the FRTC modernization project.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie, for the record. I'll give the overview and then Joe can clean up whatever it is I screw up. In the conversations that we've had with both BLM and the Navy, specifically on Sand Canyon Road, we've come to a bit of a non-pass moment. And so we're trying to figure out which way we're going to go. The responsibilities of figuring out the easement on that federal ground is charged to the Secretary of Interior and the Secretary of Navy in the NDAA that was approved. The BLM, under Interior, is suggesting that they cannot give the easement to the county as law states without placing maintenance requirements on that road for the county to implement. This is a non-maintained county road. That's how it's been previous to this. And that's how the county saw it in this action moving forward. So for it to become maintained, that would cost the county money. So we went to the Navy and basically said, Navy, you know, if this is going to have to be maintained, then we need to work a road agreement with the Navy. And you guys can pay us for 25 years of maintenance, or you can pay us yearly, or however you want to do that. The Navy has come back and basically said they do not have the authority to pay for maintenance on a road that is not on Navy land. That would suggest that they do maintenance on Pole Line Road and it's not on Navy land, but just saying. But that's what they said, that they could not do maintenance on this, and therefore we are at an impasse. But they did ask that we clearly state our position. And as such, they would move that up the ladder to Department of Defense in Washington DC. So the purpose of putting this together is to basically clarify what the county statement is related to easements, related to maintenance on Pole Line, Sand Canyon, as well as East County, I believe. And I'll let Joe get into the details of what it addresses. But it's really trying to provide clarity that Navy can take up the chain of command.
And that's correct. The purpose of this resolution is to outline the two potential options that are out there. I think either one is perfectly acceptable to Churchill County, which is either, on the one hand, either the BLM can work with the Secretary of the Navy to waive the maintenance requirement and allow it to be designated as a minor county road as the current roads are, which would waive any maintenance requirement and leave everybody essentially as they started. On the other hand, if a maintenance is going to be required, that it would be constructed pursuant to our regular general county road standard. I did actually confirm right here. It says paved roadway in our current resolution. I just spoke with Gary that it would be allowed to be unpaved as long as it meets the appropriate standard. So I can change that. Otherwise, it has to meet all of our regular standards for a general county road that is going to be maintained and that the Navy has to agree to assist us in paying for whatever that maintenance cost is.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. So this will be unpaved? It'll be a dirt road?
As it's currently proposed, if it's going to be a minor county road, it absolutely will be. The, I guess it's up to this commission on what we want to propose. We do apparently have a standard for an unpaved road that could be done for a general county road. But if the commission wanted it paved, we can leave it actually as it says right now. And I'll let Jim sort of answer that question.
And really what we're trying to do is basically say, Navy, you can have it any way that you want it as long as you are realizing that you are responsible for the cost that is associated with that. In this process, the county will not incur new costs associated with whatever path they choose because this was not an action directed or designed or taken by the county. This is an action taken by the expansion of the naval base through the NDAA. So I mean, the Navy could decide, yeah, we want to pave the road. And as long as they followed our county laws and rules and, you know, would agree to long-term maintenance of that paved road, they could pave it. Or they could make it a minor county road, which is all that we have requested at this point.
So it'll be a dirt or gravel road?
That was the original intent and original request and expectation.
What's the chances that we're going to get the money from the Navy to maintain the road? Because the road department doesn't have the money right now to do that.
Well, we don't know. That's why we're passing the resolution. As the Navy asked us to basically clearly state our position so that they could take it further up the chain of command and someone higher up could then maybe make a decision to waive the requirements that they've previously had. But let me be clear, they cannot force us to accept the easement or accept the road.
Okay.
So the ultimate decision in how this plays out will be left with the county and the commission.
All right, thanks, Jim.
I'm going to read this in just for clarity into the record. So Resolution Number 16-2024, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Churchill County declaring the county's position regarding the relocation of Sand Canyon Road and Pole Line Road as a part of the FRTC modernization project. Whereas maintaining public access to areas of Churchill County is of critical importance to the county and its citizens. And whereas realigning East County, Sand Canyon, Red Mountain, and Pole Line Roads to maintain public access has been addressed since the initial proposal of the FRTC complex modernization project in 2016. And whereas FRTC modernization project was approved as a part of the National Defense Authorization Act for fiscal year 2023, Public Law 117 through 263, subtitle G, whereas Section 2991 of Public Law-
subtitle G, whereas section two, twenty-nine ninety-one of Public Law one-seventeen dash two-sixty-three requires the Secretary of the Navy to relocate A Sand Canyon and Red Mountain Road, consistent with alternative two A, as described in the final FRTC road alignment study dated March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and B Pole Line Road, consistent with the alternative three B, as described in the final FRTC road alignment study dated March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and whereas section twenty-nine ninety-one of Public Law one-seventeen dash two-six-three also stipulates that the Secretary of the Navy shall not make operational use of the expanded areas of the B-seventeen, B-sixteen, and B-twenty ranges that were not subject to previous withdrawal until such time as the road reconstruction and relocation requirements have been met. And whereas the Bureau of Land Management is responsible for the federal land upon which the relocated roads are being built and have requested as a part of the relocation, that Churchill County accepts maintenance and liability obligations for users and relocated roads, and whereas Sand Canyon Road and Pole Line Road are currently designated minor county roads for which no maintenance or liability obligations exist, which is consistent with NRS four-oh-three dash, or four-oh-three-point-one-seven-zero, so acceptance of these obligations as a part of the relocation would not be, would be a new unexpected cost to the county for which it would derive no additional benefit. And whereas the Secretary of the Interior is empowered through the Federal Land Policy and Management Act forty-three USC seventeen-sixty-two C to waive maintenance requirements as a part of the transfer and allow the, allow the roads to maintain their minor county road status. Now, therefore, before it is resolved by the Churchill County Board of County Commissioners that Churchill County is willing to accept either of the following alternatives to comply with Public Law one-seventeen dash two-six-three. One, Churchill County will construct a standard twenty-foot unpaved roadway at the Navy's expense, along with the relocated routes for Sound, Sand Canyon Road and Pole Line Road. BLM shall transfer public right-of-way authorizing Churchill County along these roads, which shall continue to be designated as non-maintained minor county roads as authorized by NRS four-oh-three-point-one-seven-zero. Or, option two, Churchill County will construct and maintain a standard paved roadway at the Navy's expense along the relocated routes for Sand Canyon and Pole Line Road. BLM shall transfer a sixty-foot public right-of-way authorization to Churchill County along these roads. Churchill County shall designate and maintain the new roads to general county standards in like manner as other county roads and accepts liability for users of such roads. Churchill County shall invoice the Secretary of the Navy for the cost of maintenance and on an annual or in an other agreeable basis. That was long. Any other questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Noting none, noting none, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution sixteen twenty-twenty-four, establishing Churchill County's position regarding relocation of Sand Canyon Road and Pole Line Road due to the FRTC modernization project.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Did anyone want to pull any of the letters received? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Does anyone have anything they want, they want to consider for a future agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner and Management Staff Report. Start with you, Justin.
I have nothing to pass at this time.
I had a CNRWA meeting, Central Nevada Regional Water Authority meeting, last Friday, and then I also had a small business forum with Lieutenant Governor this morning at the convention center. Buzz?
Nothing.
Sherry?
Nothing, thank you.
Joe?
Nothing, thank you.
Jim? Pam?
Nothing.
Randy? Okay, that works. Claims and payroll are going around. At this time, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we're adjourned.